Good afternoon. We'll get started here. First meeting of the year, January 10th of 23. That sounds strange to say. I think they're probably ready for us in the back. All right. We will call this session to order. And at this time, City Council will hold an executive session for the purpose of consulting with city staff regarding the following: pending or contemplated litigation or settlement agreement and to hold consultation with attorney under Section 551.071 of the Texas Government Code, personnel matters under Section 551.074 of the Texas Government Code, and commercial or financial information as it relates to economic development under Section 551.087 of the Texas Government Code. We anticipate coming back at 2:00 PM for our regular session, and at this time, we will be in recess. It is 2:02, and we are back from executive session convening into our regular session. Mr. Massengale is unavailable in person, but he is with us in spirit and through the interwebs. So with that, I will get us started. Today, we have Pastor Doug Hensley with the Forest Heights United Methodist Church. So as he comes forward, if you would all stand for the prayer, and then followed by the pledges by Mayor Protem, Ms. Patterson-Harris. Thank you, Doug.
Thank you, Mr. Prayer. Counsel, let's pray. Gracious and Almighty God, we thank you for this moment to stop, to pause, and to draw closer to you through prayer. I'm especially thankful for this community, a community that knows that you are active within it, that you're active in our lives, that you're doing mighty things through each and every one of us. I especially pray for our council, our mayor, for the city staff, and pray for a spirit of wisdom and discernment that they would continue to seek you in all that they do. We thank you for their willingness to serve and their willingness to be here. We just are so blessed. And so, Father, never let us take for granted the blessings that we have, the blessings of democracy, of government, of leadership, of servants, and people who are willing to step up and to lead. Be with them throughout this meeting and every day, hold them tight, and be with their families. It's in the mighty name of God that we pray, and everybody said, "Amen."
Thank you for the prayer. If you please join us as we say our pledge to the United States and Texas flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. You may be seated.
All right, we will next move to citizen comments. According to the Lubbock City Council rules, any citizen wishing to appear in person before a regular city council meeting regarding any matter that is posted shall complete a sign-up form, and then comments will allow the citizen an opportunity to make comments and express a position on an agenda item. To remind those that are going to make comments, you have three minutes. You will get a 30-second acknowledgement that you have 30 seconds left. When you come to the dais, if you would please state your name and your address. And to begin, we have Mr. Kenneth Ewing to comment on Agenda Item 6.3.
Thank you, Mayor and Counsel. My name is Kenneth Ewing, and I'm here to speak on behalf of getting the zone changing for farmland that's just been left abandoned, used to have cattle on it. But I think it'd be more appropriate for being a multifamily home area, duplexes, because of the way the land's laid out, that it could be more practical. It would have less debris, smaller yards. There's been lots of development in that area, so lots of opportunity for homes to be built on that land. With the being smaller yards, it will be less likely to have trailer houses parked in the front yard, mobile homes in the back, multiple abandoned vehicles, and trash and debris in the area. So I think this would be an improvement to the area and not a hindrance. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ewing. Next, we have Ms. Paula Montoya here to comment on Agenda Item 6.4.
Happy First Groundhog's Day 2023, councilwomen and councilmen and mayor. I see a few faces different, but it seems like we don't always learn from our past mistakes. Why am I here today? I'm here today because planning and zoning's history in my neighborhood has exactly been something that has been properly represented to you in your 7-0 vote at the last meeting. The other reason I'm here is because the decisions of planning and zoning in that neighborhood have continued to devalue my personal property and my neighbors' property because of commercial being put in a residential neighborhood. Mission statement, let's take a look at it for planning and zoning. Due diligence of employees, I and my neighbors would definitely give an F. I have gotten these forms from my neighbors only because when I contacted planning and zoning on this issue before you were even addressed it in the last meeting, I sent in three forms, mine, Betty Sanders', and Teeny Sue Burgess'. So I know for a fact I did send in three forms. In addition to that, I called and I discussed the situation with three of the employees and left more than one message for the head of the department that presented this to you last time to give me a call back. I also contacted that person the week between Christmas and New Year's, and I'm still waiting for a call back. So how she could look at my councilwoman in the last meeting and say there is absolutely no opposition, I tend to disagree with. I asked Jack, the technician in planning and zoning, to please send me a blank copy of that form so I could go discuss with my neighbors. And in probably an hour's work, I have about 18 forms. They only sent out 32, and they never gave me a list of the 32 houses. So I just tried to stay in that little area. Only one other individual other than myself had received the form. Seven of the individuals are either in nursing homes in the last six months or had to move in with their families. But it gave me a great chance to finally get to know my neighbors. And when I say my property is devalued, you know, so has a lot of other. In addition to that, I will say, you know, promoting relationships, we have failed in. I not only discussed these situations with the engineer and past owners, and even one of the past owners stated to me, "Paula, that's a weird place for a building." And safety is one of the biggest concerns under planning and zoning. Did they ever contact the police about all of the traffic accidents right in front of that area? I myself was hit there October 27th. There was an accident there yesterday. There was an accident there last week. There was 162 accidents there last year.
Thank you, Ms. Montoya. Next, we have Dean Tru to speak on Agenda Item 5.11.
Mayor and Counsel, we're here today to discuss Item Number 5.1 on the consent agenda. I'm representing Tru Contracting Solutions. We are a new construction company formed in the last year to do water and wastewater plant projects. This would be our first project as a new business, but with our experience, we're fully confident that we could perform this job. As a company, our team has over 30 years of combined experience on water and wastewater treatment projects, some of those here in Lubbock, some of them in other areas of the state. We've worked on well over $500 million of completed projects in the state of Texas. On this project, 5.11, there were three bidders. Tru Contracting, us, $1,750,000. The second bidder was Red River Construction, $1,887,400. The third company was Dow Tech, $1,933,600. We were $137,400 lower than the next closest bid, so about an 8% percentage. However, after the RFP evaluation processed by the city staff, we were ranked last by them on their point system. Red River had 90.13 points, Dow Tech 8605, and we had 83. As previously stated, our team is well qualified to complete this project. We are bonded for the full project cost of $1,750,000. The bonding company evaluated our team and decided that we could do the job, and they will issue the bond to the city. To our knowledge, the evaluation team did not contact our references regarding our principals and our superintendents to verify their experience. In summary, we are a Lubbock business. We were low-bid by $137,400 or 8%. We have over 30 years' experience on water and wastewater treatments with hundreds of millions of dollars under our belt in completed projects. We are fully bonded, mitigating the risk to the city. For these reasons, we are asking the city council to pull Item 511 from the consent agenda, and we are requesting that they award this contract to Tru Contracting Solutions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tru. Lastly, we have Shannon Biford here to speak on Agenda Item 6.3.
How are you guys? Mr. Kenneth spoke amazing everything he said. I agree with him. On the factual side, new houses, two-bed, one-bath, are selling for $203 per square foot. As soon as they're listed, they're going under contract, which tells us there's a need for new housing in this area. This area, as y'all know, is less than two miles from the airport and across from Amazon. If Mr. Kenneth's property sells to a builder and the builder suffices the need of new housing, you know, it's going to... The ones who will be buying the properties are Amazon, airport, and nearby business folks. Lubbock continues to grow, and the houses selling at this speed and price point is just more proof that there's a need for this area. Multifamily zoning would be great, and newer, it would improve the area. I think it's a great need. Thank you.
All right, we'll next move to the minutes, which is Agenda Item 4.1. This is November 29th of 2022, special city council meeting with the EUB. December 6th of 2022, regular city council meeting. I would entertain a motion to approve Agenda Item 4.1.
This is approved.
Thank you, Ms. Joy. Thank you, Ms. Martinez-Garcia. All in favor of approval, Agenda Items 4.1, please say aye.
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 Thank you, Mr. Massengale. All right, motion to approve carries 7-0. All right, we will next move to our consent agenda. We have several items that have been requested to be pulled. If it's okay with council, we'll pull those out, discuss those, and then we can either bring those back in to vote in totality, or we can vote on those individually. First, we will move to Agenda Item 5.3. I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Atkinson.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. Item 5.3 is a budget amendment. I will start on it. I'm going to go ahead if it's all right. Mayor asked Ms. Karen Murphy, Community Development Director, to come up. The budget amendment is to accept some additional funding to come into us for what we call the Comprehensive Energy Assistance Program, or CAP. It is a way that we can assist residents through a third party with some of their energy bills. I think many of us got calls over the holidays, certainly as utility bills are going up. This is one opportunity that we do have to assist. So, Ms. Murphy, if you're up, would you mind kind of giving us some thoughts on how people can best get in line for this assistance?
Yes, sir. Good afternoon. This is a grant that we normally get on an annual basis for the Comprehensive Energy Assistance Program. This year, the reason we don't know how much money we're going to get for this grant each year at the time that we do the city budget. We budgeted 1.5. We actually got 1.5, well, $25,723 additional. So we have to appropriate that. That's why we're having the first read on this. You'll see at the next council meeting, the second read, we will have our next two contracts for TDAHCA. And then we also sub out to Neighborhood House or Lutheran Social Services of the South. They're the ones that actually do our contracts, or the applications, so for our citizens to apply. These are for vulnerable populations, low-income, actually poverty level, that can apply. It's normally people that are on fixed income that can't afford, and this is only for electricity only. So these applications will go out the 17th of this month. So we will already start going that process before we come to you guys to get those contracts approved. But we will go ahead and get that application started, process started. They can either get online and download those applications and submit them by email, or they can make an appointments with Neighborhood House, come to their office, pick up a paper application, and then they will go in an interview, and they'll go through the process with them and get them approved. Then we will actually have payments over a certain period of time that they would, up to $2,500, that can provide assistance with their electricity.
Ms. Joy.
Where is Neighborhood House located?
6,500 block of University. They're actually inside the YWCA building. Their offices are.
And so, citizens who are in need of some assistance can go to Neighborhood House and the 6,500-block University located in the YWCA building.
Yes. I would suggest they actually call Neighborhood House first because they have to set up an appointment. They will have times, and those applications will not be available until the 17th.
Until when?
The 17th of this month.
17th of January.
Yes.
And City Manager is correct. We are getting lots of calls.
Yes, ma'am.
Utility bills are high, and we all know that they're high, not because LP and L raised their rates, it's because of that power cost recovery that's a pass-through from the people we buy our electricity from. So I think people understand that, but they really need to know how to get their application, where to take it. Everybody doesn't do online, and because we're dealing with some lower-income, and in this case, probably some older people, so they can go to Neighborhood House after January the 17th.
And I would suggest a call first because then they have a certain way that they can pick up the application.
They have a phone number.
I do not with me. No, ma'am, I don't. I can get that to you.
Let's see if we can get that before council's over today.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions? I just think, statement-wise, when we get those emails, I just encourage people to actually fill out these applications. A lot of the emails I receive, there was no record that people had actually filled out an application for help, and that would also help your office as well. So if you know people that need assistance, and I see Mr. Howerton coming with the phone number, then make sure that you encourage them to fill the application out so we can try to help them.
Neighborhood House phone number is 806-589-1907.
If you need assistance. Again, this goes to electricity only, does not work with other utilities. So with that, any other questions?
I have a question.
I'm sorry. Oh, they're all the way down at the bottom. Mr. Atkinson, would you? Sir.
Ms. Joy.
Hold on just a second. Technical difficulties. All right, now I've got Ms. Patterson-Harris was up first, and then Ms. Martinez first.
Ms. Karen, I just have this question. If you know whether or not, how we'll be getting that information out, if everybody, of course, is either sitting in this location or watching, they might catch it this time. But what are the means that we're going to be using in order to get the word out so citizens can know that there is help available?
We already are receiving emails, and so we're going to do that blast out. We'll do it on also our social media, and then we've also, like the mayor and Latrell Joy's already mentioned, we've already gotten a lot of phone calls. And so we have those. We're going to put that out as much as we can and start contacting. Everybody that's calling us right now, this is an annual thing, so they have to reapply every year in January, so they already have it on their calendars. They're ready for it to happen, so...
All right, thank you.
All right, Ms. Partiz Garcia.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to also reassure, because we do have senior citizens. Those are just some of the calls that I've been receiving. I know we've already heard, but what are we doing? How are we accessing them? Because sometimes they're not tech-savvy, and they have no way of accessing us.
Right. And so we're going to be able to get that information out to neighborhood associations, different agencies like that. So we also let 211 know, and we get phone calls every day. And so we're going to, we get people that are actually a part of organizations. So we also let all the nonprofits we work with also to let them know. So we will try to contact them as much as can. And we put flyers out too when we see that there's a need, but it's a lot, it's a lot more need than we have funding. So it goes really fast.
Could I just make some recommendations of also including some of the churches?
Sure.
And even flyers in the grocery stores, because, I mean, they do look at that. That's probably more accessible to them. But that's all I wanted to say, and I appreciate what you guys are doing. I know it is a lot of need in the community, but thank you for answering the call.
Thank you.
Ms. Joy.
I just wanted to say that some of the calls that I've received over the holidays are from people who've never had to ask for help before.
Yes, ma'am.
And so those are the ones that are reaching out, I think, to the mayor, the council members, because they don't know who to call. And so you kind of miss them because they don't have it on their calendars. They've never had to do this before. So we just need to make sure that it's widely advertised to get your applications done. But thanks.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, thank you.
All right, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right, well, next move to Agenda Item 5.19. It's a resolution on public transit services authorizing the purchase of... No, go ahead, Mr. Atkinson.
Thank you, Mayor. Item 5.19, quick on the button because I really like this. We are seeking your permission to spend $12 million and $35,000 to purchase 15 new buses. No part of that $12 million comes from the city's pocket. So through the efforts of our congressional delegation, Mr. Mandrell and his staff through TaxDOT, this will be entirely funded either through the federal transit administration's LO or NO, and they're referring to emissions, grant program. And then for our local MAT, in lieu of cash, we are able to use Texas Department of Transportation credits. So replacing these 15 buses, average cost $802,000 each, will be a huge benefit to our system. Of course, we'll be replacing buses that are pretty much past their usable lifespan.
Ms. Patterson-Harris.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Jared. Are any of those buses going to be any of the electric buses, or...
Good question. These are all hybrid buses, so they will have both a relatively small diesel engine as well as a series of electric motors and batteries. And we have had hybrids in the fleet a number of years ago, and they actually performed very well, but they are not all-electric.
So it's actually going to be a good thing, even with that, the fact that we're using a different type of vehicle, if you will?
We do believe so.
Thank you.
Ms. Martinez-Garcia.
I do want to commend Mr. Mandrell and his staff again for the proactive effort of writing grants and saving tax dollars. On that note, I also want to ask, the buses that we're getting rid of, will we be keeping any of them for recycling parts? I know that's a dumb question, but it seems like that's become something that we do. And then will we be selling the others or auctioning them?
I guess the first is, we're probably a minimum of 18 months out to get the new buses, and they will not all come in, you know, all at the same time. They'll bring them into us as they are finished. Chris and his team will evaluate the condition of what we have. What is being replaced is old enough and is of a different model and manufacturer. The ability to use it for parts is going to be pretty slim, in which case it will go to auction. And just as a reminder, I know the council is aware, the buses belong to the city. They are a city asset. The operation and management is through RATPDEV, the company that runs it locally, known as McDonald Transit. But yeah, we're between a year and a half and two years out from being able to start rolling them loose.
Mr. McBrayer.
Yes, just a simple question, Mr. Atkinson. How many buses do we have in our fleet? What percentage would this be, if you know, we'd be replacing?
I do not, but Mr. Mandrell is in the audience, and I bet he could answer that for us.
We have 73 large buses in our fleet, and this will be, the grant that we receive will replace about 48 of those, and 35 of those are 21 years or older. 73, yes, sir, total. And just one small slight correction. We were working with the manufacturer of these pretty early on, right after we got the grant award, and they actually saved us production slots for this October because they kind of saw that this was coming, and they really have been a great partner. So these are actually with approval today. The purchase order we submit to them, and then they will be scheduled for production in October this year. And each bus takes two weeks to produce, and then they will be delivered. So hopefully by the end of this year, beginning of '24, we can begin putting these into service.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. All right, well, next move to 5.21. This is regarding restrooms. Mr. Atkinson.
Thank you, Mayor, Counsel. As you recall, on December the 13th, we sought your permission to purchase a number of new restrooms for the parks. At that time, we told you we would be back today to talk about renovating existing restrooms. So your agenda item today is to take seven of our existing restrooms and have them renovated, modernized. Each one of them really has a slightly different scope of work that goes to that. These would be located existing, again, at the Buddy Holly recreational area, the Clap Park Ball Field, Hodges Park, McKenzie Park South, May Simmons Park, McAllister Park, and McCullough Park. $232,123, and these are American Rescue Plan Act, or ARPA, dollars that were previously allocated by the city council.
Mr. McBrayer.
My question relates to, will there be plans for additional facilities? I know the park in my district, Wagner Park, is a very heavily-used park. It used to have a restroom there, doesn't have one now. My concern is that with all the children that are there and the families that use that park, that something adequate for that park facility would be in place. What are the plans for the future?
Two things I would say to that. One is, we roll through the ARPA allocation to parks, and if any dollars... and if any dollars remain, we absolutely have a chance to do that. Wagner's a great example. There's several others that really need them. Second one, just as part of our ongoing budget process, we can start looking at adding those, subject to availability.
All right. Thank you, Mr. McBrayer. We will next move to agenda item 5.38. Sager?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Item 5.38 is a zone change request of AMD Engineering from Single Family District R1 and High Density Apartment District A2 to Two Family Residential R2. I have the aerial pulled up on the screen. It borders Colgate and Auburn to the north and south, and Chicago Avenue to the east. I'd be pleased to go through the presentation or if you have any specific questions.
I think this is a specific request, Ms. Joy?
Yes. At planning and zoning, there was opposition to this development. Now, as I read the notes, it became clear that some of those objections have... will have been cured. And I think Mr. Stevens is here with a site plan.
He is.
And that's on the screen currently. My concern has been traffic. Between Erskine and the North Loop, there's only one through street, and that's Auburn. And so a lot of the objections were to the traffic, and they just are finishing up a huge apartment complex there on Auburn, in addition to the one that already exists. So in visiting with Mr. Stevens and after reading the comments, it appears that on the west end, which would be to the left, would be the only exit from that, I assume from the R2 residences, for them to exit and hopefully turn and go to Frankford. Because if they turn and go to Auburn, we've got too much traffic. And so I think they've tried to correct objections. I also understand that there's going to be an exit onto Colgate. Colgate's not a through street. It... it's... it comes off a slide road and goes kind of not quite to the end of what they're proposing. And so that would be one other way for them to exit, to get to an easier route. Now, I also understand that they will be... right now, what there is at Colgate is half of the road. And so the developer will be paying for what they call their half of the street. And I've been asking Mr. Stevens why they didn't just do the whole street, so... because it really is a mess. So I just wanted to be sure that everybody has seen what they're planning. The houses that you've... single family, those are the ones in the red, and I'm not sure what color that is. I don't know if that's gray or...
And I'll pass these out, so everyone has one.
Okay. Anyway, those will continue to be R1. Is that correct?
Yes. So on the south, on Auburn, like you said, the red and green, those are R1, single family. The site plan that I just passed out made a slight tweak on Colgate. Those are going to be duplexes now rather than townhomes. But like you said, our only entrance and exit off of Auburn Street is on the southwest corner, per the site plan. We also have an exit and entry on Chicago as well, on the east side of the site, so...
And Chicago, North Chicago, is not a through street either. It's...
Right.
Terminates about... about First or Second Street.
Believe so, to the north, yeah.
So the single family residences, are they going to be rear entry or front?
I don't believe Tyler Gentry is here as well. It does rear entry or front? Front entry.
So there will be that traffic that will exit directly onto Auburn.
Right.
I just want everybody to be aware. These are great neighborhoods out here. The neighborhood to the south is a very good neighborhood, but they're kind of blocked in by R2 to the north, duplexes to the north. And then you've got apartments going to the east
East, right.
From them. So traffic
Yes, ma'am.
is a major concern.
Right.
And I don't think anybody's going to want to drive through those neighborhoods, because those streets don't go straight.
Right.
But they could if it gets too crowded.
Right.
I just want everybody to be aware that this is a density issue, where it creates a lot of traffic on the only street that goes all the way from Slide Road to Frankford.
Yes, ma'am.
So any changes that you make, please let us know.
We will. We will.
Ms. Joy, do you see any need to pull this out for a separate vote? Are you good leaving this included in the...
No, I think based on what I've seen today, we didn't have this
Right, right. Yeah, that's why I wanted to bring it today.
How many duplexes do you contemplate within this development?
I believe it's 300 total units. The number of duplex units...
Not sure.
It should be on that site plan to the side, on the bottom right-hand corner.
Forty-four.
Forty-four.
And so some are... some are senior living units?
Right, in the center.
In the center?
Yes, yes, ma'am. Yeah.
Roughly...
So it's going to be a mix.
Twenty building... twenty-one buildings, twenty-two buildings, forty-four homes.
Okay. The only other request I have, and I know you don't have any control over it, we need commercial north of the loop. Very little. We have a CVS, a pack-a-sack, potentially another convenience store. And we have the Alamo, yeah, draft house
Right off the loop, yeah.
and Twisted Route and some of those places, which are great.
Mm-hmm.
That's all there is. And we need commercial. We need restaurants. We need service
Right.
things. And so to the extent that you can encourage some of these developers to do that would really be appreciated, because otherwise they have to come inside the loop
Right.
go around the loop to somewhere else.
I'll surely do that.
Yeah, we'll get right on that.
I know. Pull some strings. Pull some strings.
Snap your fingers.
Well, there is a way to encourage the development. You have to have people willing to go out there and do that.
Right.
We're really dense population-wise out there right now. And so anything you could do, we'd appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
All right, I'm going to jump back real briefly and go back to Mr. Tru's agenda item 5.11. Mr. Atkinson, could you please explain to council, I mean, kind of give a rundown of the reasoning on 5.11?
Certainly, be glad to do that. And, you know, I think the best way to begin is, we certainly appreciate Mr. Tru and his company's interest, and we look forward to seeing him come in on many more. This one is a bit unusual, though, and there's a reason it was done as a request for a proposal rather than strictly as a low-bid type project. The real reason for that is this is your largest sewer plant in Lubbock. It flows roughly 19 million gallons a day of raw sewage through it that we have to treat in various different manners. The project is to repair, replace pieces on two of the clarifiers at that plant. And we have to do that while keeping the plant running as we go through that. This is one we don't have an option. It has to work. It has to work correctly. So for those reasons, it went out as a request for a proposal. We give the highest weight always to price, and we did on this case. We also look at time, so how long will it take the proposer to do it? In this case, all three proposers were the same on the time, so they all got the same credit. But then we look for what we call the qualifications, which is, what are the qualifications of the company? The depth, experience, direct experience on similar projects in the form or in the organization that they are now. And that is the point, you know, at which that went down for Mr. Tru's company. But I do hope we see him again. We do value local business. This is just one that, based on Mr. Keenum and his team's evaluation, we really need the experience of folks that have worked on a plant that will remain running through the entirety of the project.
All right, any questions, Mr. Atkinson, on 511? Ms. Martinez Garcia?
I'm not real familiar with the process, but I know that you do have a committee that reviews RFPs. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
So it is a thorough process. So it's not... I mean, I understand the concern from our local business, and I appreciate, like you said, local business is so important, but it is a process. So it's not just like, we just picked this one company. It goes through several channels.
That is correct.
That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez Garcia. All right, does anybody have any specific requests prior to me going back to the consent agenda for vote? Are we good with Mr. Massengill on line? All right. Does anybody have any specific they would wish to be pulled, or can we vote in total? All right, thank you, Ms. Joy. I won't take that as a formal motion. I'll just move forward with that. So at this time, I would entertain a motion to approve 5.1 through 5.38 in total. Thank you, Dr. Wilson. A second, Ms. Martinez Garcia. All in favor of approval of agenda items 5.1 through 5.38? Please say aye.
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 Thank you, Mr. Massengill. Any opposed, by like sign? I feel like someone's speaking down from heaven on us with that voice. Motion carries 7-0. All right, we will next move to our regular agenda, and we will start with board appointments. And again, under 6.1, this is a lengthy Board and Commission appointments list. With, again, approval of council, I will read these into the record and then take a vote. If council at any time feels like we need to pull one of these out to specifically discuss or vote on, please interject and let me know. I will start with the American Windmill Museum Board of Directors. We have a recommendation to reappoint Raquel Gonzalez from District 1. On the Animal Services Advisory Board, we have a recommendation to appoint Aaron Chavaria from District 6. On the Central Business District, well, the TIF, the Reinvestment Zone Board of Directors, we have a recommendation to reappoint Suzanne Blake, Jeremy Hamilton, and Dan Williams. On the Community Development and Services Board, we have a recommendation to reappoint Roxenna Anzira, Leo Flores, both from District 1, as well as Jay Warnick to replace Gracie Gomez. Jay is from District 4. On the Cultural Arts Grants Review Standing Subcommittee, we have a recommendation to appoint Paula January from District 3. On the Health Educational Facilities Development Corporation, which is my knowledge this meets very seldomly and has not met in five years, we have a recommendation to appoint John Mammon from District 3. On the Housing Finance Corporation, we have a recommendation to appoint William Danovic from District 6. On the Libraries Board, we have a recommendation to reappoint Ken Gunselman from District 6, to appoint Jan Ramirez from District 1, Derek Raybon from District 2, and Patricia Maloney from District 3. On the Lubbock Business TIF, Reinvestment Zone Board of Directors, we have recommendations to reappoint Sunny Garza, Cassandra Henry, and Tyler Young. On the Northern Overton Tax... North Overton Tax Increment Finance District Board of Directors, we have recommendations to reappoint Kurt Metcalf, Patrick Murphy, and Lisa West. On the Permit and License Appeal Board, we have recommendations to reappoint... or to appoint Natalie Peebles from District 3 and Thomas Hawkins from District 6. For Planning and Zoning Commission, we have recommendations to appoint Terry Morris from District 1, and that is to replace Abel Hernandez from District 6. On the Urban Design Historic Preservation Commission, we have a recommendation to appoint Randy Henson from District 6 to replace Chris Berry, and then to reappoint David Chappa, Chase Marbury, and Tamara Walter. Next, we have the Urban Renewal Neighborhood Redevelopment Commission. We have recommendation to appoint Mark Sanders from District 2, Brett Moody from District 3, Casey Sherwood from District 6, and Joseph Schultz from District 4. And lastly, on the Zoning Board of Adjustment, we have a recommendation to reappoint Chris Koch from District 4, Matthew Hadley from District 6, and then to appoint, or excuse me, to promote Catherine Salcedo, who is currently the alternate, and appoint her and promote her to the board, and then add Stephen Devonport from District 1 as the alternate. Am I correct on those, Ms. Courtney? All right. I would entertain a motion to approve of those recommendations and appointments. Thank you, Mr. McBrayer. We have a second from Ms. Martinez Garcia. All in favor of approval of those board commission appointments, please say aye.
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 And any opposed, by like sign? All right, motion carries 7-0. All right, next we will move to agenda item 6.2. This is a motion to declare three appointments by the mayor to the Lubbock Housing Authority Board of Commissioners. We have Toby Cecil, Basilia Mann, and Jerry Ramirez. And I believe all of these are currently on this board, and this would be reappointments. At this time, I'd entertain a motion to approve of those three persons.
Mayor, if I may, on that one, it's just actually a declaration from the mayor. So it's the mayor's appointments, so we put it on the system.
Hereby declared.
You hereby declare them. Yes, sir.
Thank you for reminding me of that, Ms. Garza. Appreciate you. All right, we will now move to agenda item 6.3. And I believe I'll turn it over to Ms. Sager.
Thank you. Item 6.3 is Zone Case 804C. The applicant is Keller Williams Realtor for Kenneth Charles Ewing's. Request to rezone property from single-family residential R1 to two-family residential R2. We sent out 14 notifications, received zero in favor, 44 in opposition, 39 of which were from outside the 200-foot notification boundary. This property is located north of Kent and west of Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard. Here's the response map showing the responses within the 200-foot notification boundary that were received in opposition. Here's an aerial view of the subject property. It is in a relatively rural area. Do you have large lot residential adjacent to it, but you do have commercial development immediately south of it. The current zoning is R1 with industrial park zoning to the south. Future land use plan designates property for low-density residential land use. The requested R2 zoning would be medium-density residential, so it would be a minor deviation. Here's some photos of the subject property and surrounding area. As I stated, the future land use map would be a minor deviation. Would the R2 be approved? The proposed zone change to R2 is in conformance with the zoning ordinance and appropriate in this location. It's compatible with the surrounding area, and the location along East Kent Street, which is designated as a collector, and west of Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard, which is designated as a principal arterial, is appropriate for the site. Staff recommended approval of this request. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval by unanimous vote, and council recommended... council approved first reading by a vote of four to three. And I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
Any questions, Ms. Sager? All right, entertain a motion to approve agenda item 6.3? All right, entertain a motion to approve Agenda Item 6.3.
[inaudible]
Thank you, Ms. Joy. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Massengill. All in favor of approval of Agenda Item 6.3, please say aye.
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 All opposed by like sign?
Nay.
Believe that failed three, four. All right, we will next move to Agenda Item 6.4. This is the, I believe this is the, well, I'm just going to turn it over to Ms. Seeger.
Sure. Item six-
Go ahead, Ms. Seeger, thank you.
Thank you. Item 6.4 is Zone Case 1977H. The applicant is Seventeen Services LLC, requests to rezone property from Apartment Medical District and Restricted Local Retail District C2A to Local Retail District C2. We sent out 33 notifications. We received zero in favor and zero in opposition. This property is located west of Slide Road, north of 73rd Street. Here's an aerial view of the subject property. There is an existing commercial building on this property with residential to the north and west, additional commercial to the south, and additional residential to the east across Slide Road. Current zoning is Apartment Medical and Restricted Local Retail District. There is R1 to the northeast and south with additional restricted local retail district to the south. I said that wrong. R1 to the northeast and west. Future land use plan designates this property for commercial land uses, so the requested C2 zoning is appropriate in this location. Here's some photos of the existing commercial building on the property along with the surrounding The future land use map designates the area for commercial, so the request is appropriate. The zone change is in conformance with the zoning ordinance and is located along a major thoroughfare. It's compatible with the surrounding area. Staff recommended approval of this request. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval by unanimous vote, and council approved first reading by a vote of six to one, and I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
Dr. Wilson.
So, Ms. Seeger, I'm slightly confused. We heard Ms. Montoya come up here in the beginning and saying she had submitted three letters before the first reading and now has 18 in opposition before the second. How come we're still reporting that there's zero opposition?
My department has not received any responses to the three that she said she submitted as well as the 18.
Okay. Were there phone calls made? I mean, she listed specific, like, names that she talked to.
Sure. I do know she spoke with the planner who was handling this case prior to the Planning and Zoning Commission. I do not know if she attended the meeting. I do know she called during the month of December while I was on vacation. One of my employees texted me that she called and that she had sent them to my supervisor. I know she spoke with my supervisor as well as his supervisor.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions of Ms. Seeger on 6.4? Ms. Joy.
The restricted use that it's currently under in C2A.
So, the name of that's a little misleading. The property is allowed any uses within the C2A zoning district to a point because it's actually split zoning of AM and C2A. So it's not, it's not restricted to any one specific use. That's just the name of the district. It's just, it's not as open, it doesn't have as many permitted uses as local retail district C2.
So they're actually changing the AM part of it to C2?
As well as the little sliver of C2A, yes, ma'am. The blue on this map here is the Apartment Medical. The very southern boundary of the property is C2A.
What's the objection to your knowledge from at least the phone calls? If we don't have it in writing, I understand that we're not going to have those in front of us, but what's been the objection?
My understanding is mainly traffic. Commercial businesses generate traffic, and this does have an existing building. They're wanting to add a bank with a drive-through for the tellers, which is the need for the
Ms. Joy.
About this last time, bank with a drive-through and everybody envisioned a three-lane, you know, cars.
Mm-hmm.
That's not what they're talking about, is it?
A single lane was my understanding.
A single-lane drive-through for drop-offs?
Yes, correct.
Primarily. Does it gentleman up?
Here to answer any questions.
Why don't you answer that question for me?
Hi, counsel, how are you today? So this is a small community bank looking to occupy a part of the first floor of this building, and they do hope to add drive-throughs, and my understanding is two or three lanes, not a single lane.
Say that again.
Say it a little louder.
Oh, I apologize.
Just raise the microphone up.
So this is a small community bank. They look to occupy part of the first floor of the building, and they do anticipate applying for permit to add drive-through lanes, two or three lanes in the backside, is my understanding. So I actually spoke to Ms. Montoya, she called our office, and this was before the first zoning reading, and she was concerned about the traffic increase. Previously, this was a medical office with lots of patients coming in each day, and so in my opinion, I don't think there's necessarily an increase in traffic between a small community bank opposed to a medical office, but we disagreed on that. And she was opposed, I gave her the owner's phone numbers, they said she never reached out, and I didn't hear from her again.
Dr. Wilson, do you have questions?
I was just going to say, so that contradicts what we were told last time. Last time we were told it would just be a single, that it would be a drop-off lane only. So they are actually planning a multi-lane drive-through.
I believe they, they hope to apply for permit for two or three lanes, yes.
I mean, that's still, so I had concerns last time, I voted against this last time due to the traffic there. I know, I received a call from Ms. Montoya, she was, I think, trying to, and I never got the numbers, but trying to get with PD to get traffic rec and accident numbers from that area, but I do know it is a very high traffic and with a high accident area. So that was what her concern was, that she relayed to me.
Okay.
Ms. Patterson Harris?
Thank you. I have a two-part question. You indicated a small community bank, and with that, I'm wanting to know how small, and is this the only location here in Lubbock?
So the name of the bank, I believe, is West Texas State Bank. I couldn't tell you how many customers they have or speak to the volume that they deal with, but currently they have one office here. I think they have a couple other offices in smaller towns.
This would be the only one here at Lubbock?
To my knowledge, yes.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
What's the neighborhood to the south?
To the south is natural grocers, I believe.
All right, thank you, sir. Any other questions? Tell me your name again, I'm sorry.
Tyler Gentry.
Yeah, thank you, Tyler. I think we have a couple of questions that maybe there's, maybe Ms. Seeger didn't get the information. I think it matters to maybe us that if it's one lane versus three, that maybe it's anyway quite a bit of difference. Is there a way we could clarify that if we, if we move this to the 24th?
To be able to-
That'd be something that could be clarified because, or are you absolutely certain it's going to be multi-lane?
I'm not certain. We have, we do not have anything in place.
He, he's not certain, but he could get that answer by the 24th.
Does counsel have any issues with moving this to the 24th?
I don't have any issues, but I also like your request.
Okay.
I know Ms. Montoya also mentioned several accidents, so if there's a way that we can follow up on that part of it, I think that would also be helpful in making our decision or my decision.
All right, I have a motion to postpone Agenda Item 6.4 to January 24th. Thank you, Ms. Martinez Garcia. Do I have a second? Thank you, Dr. Wilson. All in favor of moving 6.4 to January 24th, please say aye.
Aye.
I'm waiting for that voice. I know, but I'm just waiting for it. Thank you.
I'm trying to be quiet, mayor, but.
Motion to postpone 6.4 to January 24th carries seven zero. All right, moving on to Agenda Item 6.5. I think we postponed this from our last meeting, and I will turn it over to you, Mr. Brown.
Good afternoon, mayor and counsel, good to be here today. We want to briefly go over, as we talk about the SKINES Project Management Services, the timeline of where we get, how we got to where we're at today. Let me get this going just right. You might recall in September of 2004, the Lubbock Fire, Lubbock Fire Rescue and Police Department implemented the system that we're using today called, it was Tiburon at the time. A few years later in 2010, went to upgrade that for new functionality to a Tiburon product. It was a beta program. That lasted until 2014. In 2014, we reverted back to the version we had in 2004. The Tiburon company was acquired by a company called Tritech, which is pretty common in the software world, people get acquired. In 2018, Tritech was then acquired by Central Square. In 2019, Central Square introduced a new system that we're proposing to do. Contract was approved by counsel last session. So it's their very new product. It's a brand-new product that they have entirely remade. It's not just the computer-rated dispatch and records management, it has multiple modules to it. It also has a dispatch, it has the records management, mobile, that's the piece that our officers use in the field, both fire and police. Data analytics and some transparency functions, all these require touchpoints, and our digital evidence management is a big piece that we struggle with today, sharing information with our county counterparts in a timely manner and efficiently. The Central Square that we're talking about implementing today, it will integrate into multiple systems. Primarily, we're looking to do a CAD-to-CAD interface with our county counterparts so we can share information more efficiently. We run on a lot of the same incidents. We'll also implement that with our, or integrate that with our public safety radio systems, our enterprise GIS systems, so we can get accurate mapping, routing, and understand where our assets are and our officers are. This will be a great improvement from an officer's safety standpoint. It'll also integrate into multiple state, federal, even local law enforcement databases. And not, not less important, but very important, it will directly integrate into our 911 system. So when our citizens call for help, we want to make sure they get it just as quickly as we can get it. I think we've talked a little bit about before, but this is a very complex project we're about to undertake. Each software deployment has a lot of unique challenges. Lubbock's no different. And it's a little bit more challenging than some that I've dealt with in the past, particularly replacing both the police and fire systems simultaneously. CAD system and then different record systems for each one, and both, all that has to kind of talk together and work together. It's a long process, a long project, and as we work through this, there's multiple decision points that will need to be addressed and thought out and decisions made correctly because of long-term ramifications of the viability of the project. I think working with the chiefs throughout this project, we really came to the realization that we, the majority of our staff has never done this before, our staff that we have left, particularly in IT and also in the public safety. That's one of the reasons we're looking to get assistance from SKINES. So we talk about who is SKINES, I mean, that's, that's really the question. They're a technology firm based out of McKinney, founded in 1989. They work exclusively with local governments, help streamline operations, and do just what we're trying to ask them to do today, reduce project risk and help us get through some of these very complex, you know. They have implemented a public safety systems in 30-plus organizations, counties, cities across the country, and of all sizes, from 50,000 to a multi-agency program with a population over a million. So we're pretty comfortable with their qualifications there, but go a little bit further, they've successfully implemented Central Square in nine cities and counties. They've implemented the Tyler Technology products in four other cities and counties. The individual they're proposing to be our project manager is very experienced, 33 years worth of technology experience, 20 years serving as the head of an IT organization, and he had personally managed three different public safety system implementations over the course of his career. Pretty deep qualifications there. What we're asking SKINES to help us with is advisement and manage all phases of this project from the city side. Central Square certainly has their project managers, as we're all aware. We're paying for that, but we need someone who's managing things from our side, who's managing our best interest. And we, we want to make sure we do that, wanting to get down to a successful launch. We want to make sure this project stays at 18 to 24 months, doesn't go to 42 or 48 or beyond. SKINES has assisted the city with this project over the last 20 months. They have a very deep knowledge of, of what we're looking to accomplish, what requirements we have, and what we need to come out with at the end of the day to have a successful system. SKINES also played a lead role in our contract negotiations. They helped us obtain some pretty deep discounts from Central Square. So they're intimately knowledgeable about what we're trying to do. Just looking at SKINES' role a little bit, we definitely need their guidance at key decision points throughout the project. Four major points that they're going to help us with, obviously, is vendor management. It's a long project, a lot of issues come up, contractual, best practices, who's responsible for what. We need help with that part. Decision advisement, we talked a little bit about that earlier. Help us work through those decisions and make sure we're making decisions based on best practices and on the needs already established for the city of Lubbock. Implementation and planning, they'll start very early on working with Central Square, develop that project plan, have some agreed-upon milestones, everybody understands what we're trying to accomplish when. Central Square will have their plan. What we don't need is a cookie-cutter implementation from Central Square that they've done for 10 of the cities. We need to make sure that this implementation plan works for Lubbock and gets the results that we're looking for here in Lubbock. And that kind of goes into the last one, risk mitigation. All that kind of rolls together, we're trying to mitigate the risks that threaten this project, whether that's decisions, resource allocation, or just things that get hung up. We want to make sure that we are addressing and having regular conversations about the risks that are associated with this project because there are many. It's a very complicated project. I guess really, at the end, they're, they're, they're here to help us, they're here to protect our interests, and not just in implementation, but all the way through post-GOLIB. So the way that implementation is set up, we'll have a lot of heavy work to do after GO-LIB. We have to go back and reassess, did the GO-LIB go well? What can we do better now? There's a lot of moving pieces there, and they'll be a key to us having a successful implementation. Central Square's project role, I mean, they certainly have a big role here. They, they will deliver a project plan. We'll work with them to agree upon the milestones. If approved, SKINES will help us do that. They'll coordinate the software delivery, the installation, and initial configuration. Many more configurations will take place over the 18 to 24 months as we go through the implementation process. I think one important thing we'll do is, they'll help us with business process analysis. It's more of an as-is, to-be type analysis. We really want to go through, what is things today? How are we doing business today? How's that going to translate into how we're going to do this in a new system? So it's more of as we're doing it today, as it will be. SKINES will help us with, through that process as well. And schedule appropriate Central Square resources will be, from the project management standpoint, on the Central Square side. There are a lot of workshops, there are a lot of training, a lot of these business analysis workshops, configuration workshops. They'll help us make sure they have the appropriate Central Square resources there. And in coordination with the city staff, we want to make sure at the end of the day all this meets the business needs of our public safety partners. That's really about all I have. Be happy to have any, come, ask any questions or answer.
Mr. Brown, I've got a couple of questions, I brought these up. Thank you for addressing those more thoroughly this time, I certainly appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
This, this contract appears, according to Exhibit A, this carries through February of 2025?
Yes, sir.
Is that the estimate? We're looking at 18, 24 months?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
So no other consideration will be paid through the end of this contract other than what we've, what we've contracted for? Is that correct?
That's correct, unless there's a change order that needs to come back to counsel. Sometimes do, things do come up, and this is basically a construction-type project, sometimes things do come up, but we have a contingency as far as the cost goes written into the project. Certainly, any of those that rise to the level of counsel, we'll be bringing those back forward to you. back forward to you. I don't expect that.
So are you telling the council that you expect that we'll have this done in 18 to 24 months, so we don't have to renew this contract?
Yes, sir.
Or pay any additional consideration to this group?
Yes, sir. That's exactly correct.
Thank you, Dr. Wilson.
And Mayor, you might be able to look, I don't have the contract pulled up in front of me, my computer's not working. If I remember, the contract with the SKINES consultant was six months. Is it written longer in the contract? So you're saying 18 to 24-month implementation time, which is probably about what I expected. But I thought the contract was only for six months for the consultant.
I don't believe so. I don't have SKINES' contract in front of me at the moment, but they're in for the project.
So, but if the contract does, in fact, and we can look that up real quick, I'm sorry.
Sure.
If it says six months, does that mean we'll be paying him a quarter of a million dollars every six months?
No, ma'am, it does not mean that at all.
Mr. Atkinson?
Thank you. And I've only got the first page of that contract pulled up, Page 1 of 11, term at the bottom. "The term commences on effective date and continues without interruption till the services set forth in Exhibit A, etc., etc. If the consultant determines additional time is required, etc., may grant an additional six months, additional, so long as the amount of consideration does not increase." That may be where the six months has come in.
Is there a specific term written in that contract for how long he is, his services are being paid for?
In just a moment.
I think that shows through February of '25. I'm looking, because it references Exhibit A. I think we're on the same page as far as making sure this isn't something where the consultant can say, "All right, pay me more, the project's not done."
Yes, I can promise you that is the case. And I'd just for a little color on that, too. The initial contract we did with them for the RFP process, the selection and contract negotiations, was originally intended to go for roughly 12 months. That process now has gone 20 months. We've not seen, received an additional invoice from them, period.
Do you know, Mr. Brown, how much we've already paid him to date?
That initial, that was, I think, $119,000 to develop the RFP to help us select and negotiate contract. And the needs assessment, I'm sorry, that was also in there.
Anything else, Dr. Wilson?
You know, I just, you know, when I look through things that the city pays for, what I'm looking for is how to not waste our taxpayers' money.
Absolutely.
That's what I'm looking for. You know, we heard a lot in the last year of people upset that the city hires multiple consultants over and over again, when they think it's not needed. And so, you know, over the last month, since we've had our last meeting, you know, these are two of the biggest departments in the city, Lubbock Fire Department, Lubbock Police Department. And so, you know, I've spoken a lot with one, some with the other, and so I know they have differing opinions on what they think with this consultant. But what I don't want to do is ever pit them against each other. I don't want one to feel less supported than the other, ever. And so I think that if one is saying they feel like they definitely need it, one thinks they're not sure either way, I think probably I am willing to look past that and move forward with a consultant, because I want to best support our first responders, because our first responders directly work for the citizens of this city. And I want them supported through a major transition, because this is going to be a major transition for both departments and for the city, for the IT department, for you.
I totally agree with that. I think if you look at the, for us, public safety is our number-one responsibility to support them. And I think that this, what this will do for us, and I understand the value of taxpayer dollar.
Yeah.
Really do. But this will give us the best choice, best chance to be successful in this.
I think that was probably one of my biggest concerns, was the read in the contract looks much shorter than what I knew it was going to take to implement this. I don't want a consultant to come in for six months and then be gone, or require more and more and more money, and y'all are stuck without having that support, without them coming back constantly and costing a million dollars just for a consultant.
I understand that.
Agreed. Thank you, Dr. Wilson. Ms. Martinez-Garcia?
I just want to also emphasize how important, I mean, public safety is probably one of the number-one concerns of the citizens. That is so important. So communication and making sure that all chiefs, I know we have a lot of chiefs, but that they're all on board, and that we are making sure that we're responding to the need, not just of one department, but both departments. So, so important. But also, your department is very important. Communication is critical. So I hope that there is ongoing communication between you and our departments, just to make sure that we navigate through this very easily, and, but also with transparency to not only the citizens, but to the council.
Absolutely. We understand that, and we'd be happy to provide updates as we go. I can assure you that we spend a lot of time talking with each other, not only on this particular issue, but on many issues and how we can best support them.
Appreciate that.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez-Garcia. Mr. McBrayer?
I'm not of the opinion that consultants are necessarily wasted money, but they do oftentimes replace money that could be spent on other things we do that our citizens need, that they see. Street maintenance, things like that, that we're always trying to get money for. So I'm very cognizant of how much money, and that is one of the things I hear a lot about, how much we spend on consultants. My question to you, this particular Central Square project, has it, are you aware if it's been implemented in any other cities without a third-party handholder, so to speak?
I'm sure there is. I'm not currently aware of that. I know that many cities, particularly larger cities, and things are more complicated, and they generally do this. I think I said the last meeting, this will be my fourth time to do this. Two other times, we used consultants to do that, but one time we didn't. I much prefer the consultant role, because they give us some, again, some advisement, what happens in other, or how other organizations transact their business, and we can mutually use that. But I totally understand your concern.
But Central Square is a, I've heard this word, gold standard. I mean, they know what they're doing, and they, this is not the first time at the rodeo for them. They're used to working in large projects like we've got here. Is that...
Absolutely, sir.
They have an interest in seeing that their project interfaces with what we've got. It doesn't do them any good not to have that happen.
That is correct. And the consultants we're talking about here is currently implementing this in another city in the metroplex at the moment.
And the couple of times you did it without a consultant, how did that work out?
Very difficult. It's a strain on staff resources. Everybody already has another job or two to do, and this is generally a full-time job plus. It just takes a lot of resources to put one of these projects together. Generally, when, the time we've done it before, it stretches on to about three years. That was my experience, the last time we did it, and without help. It was a three-year process, instead of an 18 or 24-month. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McBrayer. Ms. Joy?
Let's make this contract clear, because it kind of got muddied somewhere, some of the comments. I think the mayor set it out correctly, that it is for the 18 to 24 months. If there's anything needed beyond that, then it has to come back...
Yes, ma'am.
...and be approved. So I don't know where the six months came from, but that doesn't have anything to do with this contract. Secondly, it is my understanding that for months, there have been meetings between the police department, the fire department, city management, and IT concerning this contract. Is that correct?
We've had multiple meetings concerning the project in general, for sure, and that's been a topic at some of those meetings.
And before you brought it to council, was there agreement between the police department and the fire department? I'm not talking about the association, I'm talking about the department. Was there an agreement that this contract should be brought forward to the council?
That was my understanding, yes, ma'am.
Okay. Now, there was a comment made that the first responders work specifically for the citizens, and I agree with that. They don't work for an association, whether it be a police or fire. And when we were here before, we continued this, because one of our council members started questioning about some issues. And so we're back here today, and I want everybody to be perfectly clear that this didn't come to council just by one department, whether it be police or by fire. Is that correct?
That's correct. We've worked very closely over almost two years now to develop this project, so it's been a group effort.
Including what you brought to us today?
Yes, ma'am.
And is that your recommendation, that we approve what is included in 6.5?
Yes, it would be.
Okay. That's all I need to know.
Thank you.
Well, I think, Mr. Brown, last time, there, myself included, we just, we want some more clarification on this. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And that's what you went back and provided over the last month, was more details for us as to what the purpose of a consultant at $250,000 was, correct?
Yes, sir.
And I appreciate that very much. And with that said, if nobody has any further questions of Mr. Brown, I would have a motion to approve Agenda Item... We've got... I'm sorry. Yeah, this thing doesn't... It doesn't go over the top.
Dr. Wilson?
So just for quick clarification to Ms. Joy's statement, so Fire Association and the PD Association have had, never had any discussions regarding this project, correct?
I've never spoken with them.
I have not either. Neither have they voiced any concerns. These were some department-level concerns that have been kind of rumbling around, and so that's why I asked for more clarification. It had nothing to do, I'm not sure where that came from. Associations have nothing to do with city and implemented, implementing their CAD system. So this was just department-level concerns. And I also very much appreciate the clarification, clarification of the contract and the length of the contract. So I do appreciate that.
Yeah, no problem.
Mr. Brown?
Ms. Martinez-Garcia?
Mayor, with all due respect to our colleagues, I just want to, as a councilperson, our role is to ask questions, so, and to have conversation and dialogue. So because transparency, again, because we're working on behalf of the citizens, that's why we do what we do. That's what we're doing up here, and we work for them. And so I think that it's important to have a healthy dialogue. And I just want to make that, just put that, and if you recall, when I first came into council, that was one of my first meetings, because there was already some concerns. And I don't care who that message is directed to, but we have to work collectively for the greater good of the citizens.
All right. I think discussion is done with Agenda Item 6.5. Motion to approve Agenda Item 6.5. Thank you, Ms. Martinez-Garcia. Any second? Thank you, Ms. Joy. All in favor of approval of Agenda Item 6.5, please say aye.
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 Any opposed by like sign?
Aye.
Motion carries 6-1. All right, well, next move to Agenda Item 6.6. Harvey?
Harvey Hall, CFO for Lubbock Power and Light. Before you is an amendment to, before you is an amendment to change or amend the tariff for, the rates and tariff for Lubbock Power and Light, municipal-owned utility of the City of Lubbock. This is, the changes contemplated or to be amended in this tariff are in relation to the move or the transition to customer choice this fall. Some of the major components of the proposed changes that are in this document are going to be, one, the delegation of authority to the Electric Utility Board to make changes to the general terms and conditions, but not the rate amounts themselves, that's the purview of the City Council, but to allow that for timely changes as we make the transition to market. Some of those transitions, some of those items in there, they're already listed, are going to be a change of deposits. So we'll change the language from "shall" to "may," with the contemplation that we would eventually phase out the collection of deposits, electric deposits, for our customers. Another one in there would be the ending or phasing out of the budget billing program. We would contemplate that to begin effective, to start the process in February. The timing of that is really related to, during this time in the budget billing process, most customers at this point have, are building a credit balance in there. So it's easier to work with a customer when they have a credit balance in there, rather than a deficit that you have to start to work with them on. It also gives time to help phase customers, to give customer education to the changes that are going to be proposed, and also to help guide them through higher billing periods during the summer. And it gives flexibility for the utility to work with them and help guide them to that process, to eventually phase them onto another retail electric provider. Another change in there, two other changes are going to be related to guard lights and security lights, or floodlights. I say guard and security, I'm always used to the security lights from a prior, but we would phase out the ownership of those and transition those to, to customers who have it on their property. So those are the proposed changes before the board.
All right, thank you, Harvey. Anyone have any other questions regarding Agenda Item 6.6? All right, thank you, sir.
Okay.
Entertain a motion to approve Agenda Item 6.6. Thank you, Mr. McBrayer. Thank you, Ms. Joy. Anybody have any other questions, or any questions of Mr. Atkinson? All right, all in favor of approval of Agenda Item 6.6, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed by like sign? Our motion carries 7-0. We will now move to our last agenda item. This is 6.7. I had to recuse myself from this one last time, just for reasons. I will turn it over to Mayor Potem, Ms. Patterson-Harris, and I will let her conclude this regular City Council agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Sager, if you would go ahead and give us a brief description of this item, please?
Sure. Item 6.7 is Zone Case 3347A. The applicant is Tortoise and Hare Land Company, and the request is to rezone property from transition to Commercial District C4 with a specific use for self-storage facilities. We sent out eight notifications, received none in response. This property is located east of Indiana Avenue, near 118th Street. Here's an aerial view of the subject property. It is surrounded by vacant land and additional commercial uses. Current zoning is transition. This is due to the zoning reverting from its previous approval. It was previously zoned Industrial Park District with a specific use for mini warehouses. That was done in August of 2018. Because the permit was not obtained within 30 months, it reverted back to transition. The future land use plan designates this area for parks uses, but it is surrounded by commercial designation. Here's some photos of the subject property and surrounding area. So although this would be a deviation from the existing designation on the future land use map, it is appropriate, given that it is surrounded by commercial designation. It is appropriate, it is in conformance with the zoning ordinance and compatible with the surrounding area. It is adjacent to 118th Street, which does connect to Indiana Avenue. Staff recommended approval of the request. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval by unanimous vote, and council approved the first reading by a vote of 6 to 0 with one recusal. And I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Sager. Anyone, the council members have any questions of Ms. Sager, while she's here with us. Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion for approval of Zone Case Number 3347A.
Senator Baker? Second.
Thank you. I believe that was Dr. Wilson that gave us that motion, and Ms. Councilwoman Martinez-Garcia, yeah, that gave us a second. Hearing the motion and a second on that, all those in favor, please vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by same sign? All righty, that motion passes 6 to 0. 6, 0, 1. Oh, that's right, to see it this time. Oh, wake me up, I was over here asleep, y'all, I'm just going to tell you. That passes by 6, 0, 1. Sorry. That's all I have. I don't see that the mayor is coming back, and since he's not coming back, we're going to make sure that we get out of here quick, fast, and in a hurry. So I'll say, bid everybody a good evening. Thank you for joining us, and we'll see you next time.